Again, 2024, what? Oh, thumbs up. I'm going to call the July 2nd, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It's now 6:05 PM and we will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have one member who is remote, so we're going to do a roll call attendance. Eric is here. Your turn.
Tyler here.
Kenemberg here.
Don Alckman here.
Missy Bateman here.
All right, we're going to start with some announcements. This meeting is recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. The FY25 recycling and disposal center sticker sale started on June 3rd, 2024. You'll probably note if you didn't buy your FY25 sticker, it's now expired, it's July 2nd. So these are available at the highway department window Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Weekend hours are for, will be 8:00 to 4:00 PM through July 14th, excluding holidays. Please check the website for any additional events or notices at KingstonMA.gov. All right, open forum, is there anybody who wanted to speak at open forum tonight? Yep.
Tom Taylor, Harbor Master. I just want to let everybody know that we're all up and running. We lined the parking lot and everything last night, so it's complete. And everybody was supposed to have their boats in the water by July 1st. I have about 22 that do not have them in, which means it's in the rules and regulations that they lose their spot and we start on the list again. And apparently, that's not the right thing to do, but it's in the rules and regulations. So I am going to extend it to Monday. So if you don't get it in by Sunday, you're out. Okay? I talked to Keith about it. He was up on the, up in the air a little bit about it. I just got done talking to the chief about it. And it's a rule. And it's been in place for many years and it's just never enforced. And this is the third year we've been pushing along and pushing along and I've heard every excuse, every single one you can imagine. So it's time.
There's an appeals process, right? If a mooring is removed, they can appeal. I think we had that once before.
We had one happen.
Once.
Once. It was actually, I was actually before I was on, no, I was on the board. I'm sorry, I wasn't the board, but yeah, it was an out-of-towner that appealed.
Got it.
When we, when we started enforcing out-of-town boaters that weren't, that shouldn't have been there.
Right.
There was, out of all of those, there was one at that time.
How, how many people are on the waiting list right now?
About 70.
70, okay.
And everybody wants to put their boats in and.
Oh, sure.
I tried.
Where one will be mad, many will be happy.
Exactly. Thank you.
So just to, just to, just to piggyback on what Tom mentioned, so he called me yesterday, was it yesterday he called?
Yeah.
Recently, he called me and my concern was, he's absolutely 100% right. We've had this rule in the, in, in play now in the bylaws for years. Never been enforced, for whatever reason. So my suggestion, and he kind of talked me out of it frankly, was send a letter, send a letter to the, to the 20-some-odd people who haven't submitted or haven't put their boats in the water yet because they probably think, you know what, it's never been enforced, it's not going to be enforced this year either. And tell them they've got till the middle of July or whatever the date is and, or you're going to lose your mooring. So Tom was, felt pretty strongly that that was something that we really shouldn't have to be doing and, and I concurred. So I suggested he talk to Chief Holmes, because it's his, it's, you know, he, Tom works for the police department, not me. So I, it wasn't really my unilateral decision to make and I don't know why the chief is suggesting a few more days, but he has, which I think is fair, it's out at the public meeting tonight. I'm sure it'll get on Facebook pretty quickly after this and hopefully those 20-some-odd people will make a decision one way or another.
Actually, I just got off the phone with the chief not too long ago and he tried to get me to go house to house on Tuesday to the 20 people with him and explain to them what was going on. And sorry, I'm not doing that. I don't have time to do that. It's been in play for too long and it's just kind of ridiculous at this point.
And Tommy, one of the, Tommy aka the Harbor Master, in official, official sense. One of the things that's in the rules and regulations is that, especially for the past three years, as they've been sent out in January for this whole thing to happen is you have to, you're supposed to sign saying that you have read the rules and regulations and understand that, you understand the penalties, you understand what's going to happen. It's May 1st is the deadline to have to, to pay. May 15th is a $50 charge after that. And then you're supposed to have a month and a half. And any, anybody with a reasonable combination, I've been sick, my boats in the thing, my boats, you know, can come to you in, in petition and I know you as a very graceful guy in a lot of ways and that would be done, but there's people that don't, either don't respond or don't care and think that they're above it to a certain extent. I'm not saying that's everybody in that list, but there's been, there's been some people that are like that. And there's rules for a reason and if you, if they're not enforced, what are we supposed to do? Because there's 70 people waiting to get on there.
Right. And I actually have four people that have called and said that they have an engine problems or, you know, give me a reason why they're not in and I accepted that. Actually, I had a guy call me with a video of them last night trying to start the boat in his backyard and it wouldn't start, which you don't quite have to go that far, but, you know. So he got a pass too, so. I mean, you know, if you have a good reason, that's, I'll accept that, but just not calling or anything and thinking you're going to fly along, we can't do that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Donahoe from the Sewer Commission. I'm here for two reasons. One is to give you an update on our project, which is going smoothingly, smoothingly. As you know, we've kind of kept our webpage, your webpage on, up to date for the Zoom, if you wanted to look at it, of the construction. We started officially construction on May 1st. We're two-thirds done today. There's an 18-month schedule, but we're two months today. We're going to be turning over all the wastewater from the plant probably around August 1st. And the rest of the plant will be done by this fall. And working with Matt on the revegetation, Matt Perella was involved with the revegetation so that you'll see a really nice meadow there this fall. And next year it'll be, instead of trees, you'll see wildflowers. I will also add that, any questions you have, let me know. Another reason I'm here is we're going to start the construction in Country Club Way of the Forest Main, which starts around that Lynx, that Lynx connection where our sewer easement comes through. It's going to be completely in the road up to our leaching field. We made a change to keep it, take it all into the, into the roadway so that we could protect all the trees between the neighbors and the MTA. We had a, people come and ask us about that, so we made some changes and everyone seems very happy with that. Very happy, actually. So that's good news. So everything's going very, very well and I'd love to have you come up and see it at some point. And I've also, I mentioned this to Keith earlier, we met on last Friday, which gets me to my second point about the, his objectives with you coming up later. I had scheduled a meeting with him on exactly the same subject, asking for his input to help us as we get into the bug dust of fees and betterments in the last phase. I was here 20 years ago for the first phase. I'm here for the last phase and we'll get it done, just like we did the first phase. So I'm encouraging all the interaction and help we can get from Keith. We have like a two-month window at least, at most, to kind of pull this together. It's a lot of things to deal with. And last point, when we did the, just as we were going out to construction, we had the bid, everything was rolling along. We had the first of three complaints from a neighbor, from the owner of Country, other High Point Pines and that whole thing, which fortunately we had Jay Tullerman with us who was able to win three different court proceedings and were allowed us to go forward. And the last one just came in, but Friday, saying that the appeal to our, hit the decision in favor of us was not accepted. So without that backup and support, we might be marking time, wasting a lot of money and energy. So I'll just see if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else for open forum here? We're online.
Before you move on, a couple of announcements.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, it's on the website as well, but brush chipping is the third Saturday of every month. So the next one is July 20th, so if folks want to do that. Also, the farmer's market is this Sunday on Grease, at Grease Beach from 10 to 2. And then I'll have to defer to Missy. I'm not sure when the next music night is or movie night, but they're often.
Next, next Tuesday is music night.
Perfect. Just wanted to add those for people who are looking for that information.
Perfect. All right, moving on to our appointments. The first one is to review, consider and vote on a response to an open meeting law complaint dated June 17th, 2024, filed by Michael Secone and filed with the town clerk. So we received the open meeting law complaint and our attorney has put together a response that, that everybody should have seen. I entertain a motion if somebody wants to approve that response.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the open meeting law complaint response drafted by council and authorize council to submit the response on our behalf.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, this is going to be a roll call vote. Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Next, we have a public hearing, a petition from Verizon New England and N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy proposing to place new facilities on Maple Street. Keith, can you give us an update on, on what this is and do I need to read the notice first or?
No, you don't, sir. Just, so I had the opportunity today to speak to the representative from Eversource on a couple of occasions. He sent me an email at 5:02 this afternoon saying that, that Verizon no longer needs this poll petition to be heard. They have, they will no longer need the, the additional pole on Maple Street. They found some other alternative to, to address that. Verizon, they believe, has removed all the double poles on Main Street, but is going to, they're going to verify that. And they had asked Streets Trees and Parks Superintendent to do some tree trimming on Green Street. They have decided or determined that they no longer need to have additional trees trimmed on Green Street either. And lastly, they expect to have the upgrade to the, to the power lines and, and the work that's going to be done on the library property at that pad site to be completed in the next 30 days. So it sounds like Verizon and Eversource have, have addressed a lot of the issues and hopefully they'll have resolved and completed the work that needs to be done at the library property by around the 1st of August.
So just to be clear, this was the poll that we had discussed in the past that, that had a lot of objections to it. So now they're not doing it, they, they found another way, the engineering around it. So, okay, that's good news.
Can we also find out, I don't know if it's from Eversource or whatnot, if that, like 5,000-pound piece of cinder block that they attached to one of the poles on, is it green and cross, I think, is, is permanent or is this?
Sure.
I, I, I think, I think going forward with Eversource and anything, we need like full-on plans of what they plan on doing with everything.
Yep, we will certainly do that. Make sure that that happens for you. Absolutely.
The last time I drove down Main Street, those double poles were not removed, so just.
I know they've removed some of them. I don't believe they removed all of them.
Not all of them.
No.
No. And not the one in the center of that poor woman's driveway on Pembroke Street either, so. At least still have work to do.
Yeah, Pine.
Thanks, Pine Dubois with Jones River Landing, and I appreciate that they've changed their mind, because that's why I was here tonight. But I would also ask that the next time the town communicates with Eversource that you, you tell them that it would be beneficial if they would communicate with people that have easements. They were on our place for four days this past week with four trucks, with cranes, no notice, no nothing. And it was really hard in the 95-degree weather for us to sort of endure that. And, you know, I do have, we do have a problem with the way they are handling the easement there in, in the sense that they're out of compliance. So I'd like some kind of way of, of reaching out to them besides complaining really hard or getting a lawyer to do it. But, so if the, if the town could just set a standard for Eversource that says, hey, look, when you're going to be on businesses, when you're going to be disrupting neighborhoods, if you give us notice so we can get it out there so that people are aware of what you're going to do, how long you're going to do it, you'll find us a lot easier to deal with. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Oh, is there anything else about Eversource or? Okay. So additional items, we need to do some end-of-year line item transfers. And Tricia, these in our printouts are the most current, correct? I'm going to read them. Okay. So we have a couple. From, the first one is from the Veterans Medical Benefits, 0154357772, 15,000. I'm not going to read them all. Also from medical health insurance, about 10,000, going to an IT consultant for 25,000 due to MX expenses due to the server replacement and staffing. Then we have 40,000 from solid waste rubbish and 77.15 and 43 cents from highway labor units going to an animal control equipment for 47,71543. Keith, is there anything else you want to add to this?
Thank you, yeah, just one quick thing. So the animal control van, I think that the chief has submitted some documentation that supports that, that shows that the current condition of the animal control vehicle is unacceptable and needs to be replaced. I just want to make sure the board's aware that the overall cost of the animal control van is 65,22125. The remaining $17,000 that is needed between the transfers you're approving and the purchase price of the van would be brought forward to the finance committee next Monday night, seeking a withdrawal from their contingency fund to, to purchase the, the van for $65,000. That transfer from the FinCom reserve is not something that's needed, that needs Board of Selectmen approval. So we, we wanted to, the thought was to utilize the remaining balance of that reserve before we made a, other potential transfers for board consideration. So just so you're aware of that.
Okay. Any questions?
So I apologize, this may hold us up a little bit, but a vehicle replacement, shouldn't that go through capital planning?
It sure, the challenge we have is, it wasn't proposed during the last capital plan. It's the end of the fiscal year. The, the SUV that's been used over there is not something that's roadworthy. And to be able to utilize fiscal 24 funds, we have to bring forward a, in this case, a request for transfers.
This was its second life, right?
That was. Oh, yes. It was a, it was a, a, yeah, it was a patrol vehicle.
Yeah.
And there's been, there's been a request from animal control from the time I've been here every year for a new, a new vehicle that that the police chief didn't support or fund or recommend funding for.
And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, was typically they, they will use a, a patrol car that's then out of service, but none of the patrol cars that are going to be coming out of service are going to be usable for this.
Yeah, the problem is where, you know, like everything else, we're dealing with excessive wait times. excessive wait times for equipment, including police cars. So the police cars that, that have been approved and ordered through the capital planning process are taking upwards of six months to nine months to get. So the vehicles, the police vehicles that are coming offline have that much more wear and tear on them and frankly are not worthy of making the investment to switch over to an animal control vehicle.
Did they give a general timeline and when this van would be available?
I believe the van is, is in stock at the dealership.
So just regardless of the funding source, they're supposed to look at these types of assets, capital planning. So it's like intervals of not less than five years, have a useful life of at least five years, have a minimum cost of $25,000. So I support this, but I think out of respect for their committee and their role, they should at least have a chance to discuss it briefly and vote on it, because it is purchase of equipment that will need probably replaced again at some point potentially, especially if this chief is going to look at a different type of vehicle and not use the police cars, which it sounds like. Because by the time the police cars get retired from service, they're pretty beat up and they have quite a bit of miles on them. So I'm, I support this. I don't, I mean, I don't love line item transfers at the end of the year, but I understand we have to, we have to deal with what we've got left here contingent upon that one thing being reviewed and approved by obviously Finance Committee as well and capital planning.
Any other thoughts by anybody else? No? Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the transfer, the transfers presented this evening as presented.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Did you want to make an amendment?
I mean, I'd like to amend it to say contingent upon capital planning's approval of the vehicle. But you don't have to accept that amendment.
Do they have meetings coming up and or?
They have to appoint someone for the police working group.
So they're working on, they're working on setting up a time, and I got an email tonight that I can.
You don't have to accept my friendly amendment.
The, the challenge is we've got to, we've got to have this, we've got to, by, by, and I asked Carol, maybe Carol, because Carol's online. I want to say it's the 15th of July that we have to have these transfers finalized. I think it's the 15th. I would just ask.
They only need 40 hours notice to post, right?
Ask Carol to.
When is FinCom's meeting?
FinCom is meeting Monday, the?
8th.
8th.
So capital planning would need, if we made this amendment and it passed, then capital planning would need to meet. But if they don't approve it, then, so are we saying we would only, your motion would only approve it if FinCom approves it and capital planning approves it?
I, since I mean, I mean.
How about contingent upon capital planning's review? Because sometimes they don't recommend a project, but it still goes forward to.
Yeah, I just don't want, I just want to make sure our timeline doesn't.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I mean, I think the, the note should be, to anyone doing this should be, you know, go through the channels properly in the future. I just don't know if.
So I'm used to doing, I mean, I've worked in the federal government forever and, and all the rules went out the window in September. Every, every company in the country is like, federal government has money left to spend and same with the, with towns, you know, municipalities and states. It's, it's June, let's get in and use up your money. So that's when you kind of throw these processes out the window, because it's things that you need. Obviously, if we don't need it, then it should be returned to free cash.
So the 15th is the deadline. You know, there was, there was no intent, I think, to bypass a committee who would review this. It's an emergency that needs to be addressed. I'm happy to try to ask the FinCom Chair to schedule a meeting before the 15th of July and have them review it.
Can we ask?
The concern, oh.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
The concern with something like that, though, is if they do decide to say no to something like that, we don't meet till the 16th.
But I said review.
Are you talking about Finance Committee or Capital Planning?
Well, Cap Plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, either way, we don't.
So she says review, that doesn't mean they have to approve it, they just have to look at it.
So we can vote down my motion. I'm not going to accept the friendly amendment, but I am going to ask that Keith reach out to Chair of FinCom and the Chair of Cap Planning to, to invite them to that, to that meeting.
On the 8th?
Just to be, have a presence there, right, to be able to?
Sure. So they, so, so capital planning is looking to schedule a meeting on July 10th?
Yeah.
Which is next Wednesday. The Finance Committee is meeting Monday, the 8th. I can certainly let the, the Capital Planning Committee know that the Finance Committee is considering the transfer on July 10th if they want to attend or have a joint meeting.
The 8th.
The 8th, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, that would just, so that'd be my only suggestion.
Sure, happy to do it.
While, also, yeah.
So not accepted, that's fine.
Because they can still go to FinCom. So if, just so everybody understands, if FinCom says no to this, this does not happen. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So the motion was just as it reads?
As it reads.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Was there a second?
Yes, second.
Did you ask for a second? Okay.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor, roll call. Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, no.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
All right, so it's four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is appointment of a temporary shellfish constable. With the recent resignation of a shelf, God, I can't say shellfish. Shellfish Constable Joe Zlogar, if I pronounce that right. The Harbor Master is requesting the Board appoint an interim shellfish constable while the recruitment process is completed. Harbor Master Tom Taylor and Police Chief Brian Holmes are recommending the interim shellfish constable by current Assistant Shellfish Constable Carl Ingeem?
I'm Injemi.
Injemi, thank you. I am so sorry. And if I have to say shellfish one more time. All right.
Thank you very much for that. And also, if I may just respectfully ask one thing, recreational shellfish looks great. Joe Zlogar did an awesome job. I do need about a month just to go over the razor clam commercial side of it. So if anyone drops out of that list, please don't appoint anyone until I'll report back in about a month.
Okay. All right, Keith, do you have anything to add or?
No, we're excited to have, have this be filled on a temporary basis. What the, the plan is to advertise the position and hopefully be back in two weeks with a, with a recommendation from the police chief and the Honorable Harbor Master on a, a more permanent decision.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Oh, sorry, I just, I just pointed out.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Carl Injemi as interim shellfish constable until the position is full, is filled permanently.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
Can I just quickly expand on the conversation I had, just real quickly with Carl recently, which I think when he was, when he was saying for a month, one of the things that I know he wants to do is to take a month to look at now that he's in the interim position, you know, some of the, some of the science and some of the, some of the things that are happening and come back to us with some type of a preliminary report moving forward. Just, I don't know if that was, maybe I wasn't hearing it clear, but I just wanted to expand. That was the conversation we had had. And I look forward to kind of hearing more about the commercial side and the recreational side and hearing, hearing a comprehensive report in the future. I think it's going to be really, really great to hear.
All right, next item is to the appointment of Deputy Harbor Master and Assistant Harbor Master. Due to the recent resignation of, of Deputy Harbor Master, the position is vacant. After the recruitment process, Harbor Master Tom Taylor is recommending the hiring of Glenn Kavicki to Deputy Harbor Master with Mr. Kavicki's new position that leaves a vacancy of an Assistant Harbor Master. And Mr. Taylor is recommending Luke Barron for the position of Assistant Harbor Master. Any questions? And if not, I'll entertain a couple motions.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Glenn Kavicki to the position of Deputy Harbor Master as Schedule D, Grade 5, FY25, Step 1, hourly, as needed basis position as part of the Wage and Personnel Bylaw with an anticipated start date of July 3, 2024, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
All right, you got another motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Luke Barron to the position of Assistant Harbor Master as Schedule C2, stipend as needed based, as needed basis position as part of the Wage and Personnel Bylaw with an anticipated start date of July 3, 2024, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
That was unanimous. All right, thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, next item is the review of the Town Administrator's FY25 goals and objectives. Included in our board materials are the goals and objectives proposed by Mr. Hickey. Keith, do you want to take this?
Sure, I'm just trying to.
Do you have to request a share?
So, thank you. So I, I've tried to put together some goals and objectives for myself, my staff to identify the areas that the Board of Selectmen would like, like town staff to, to work towards and try to achieve some of these goals. So I, I've, these are just my thoughts. I've shared these with department heads. Any comments that they've made, I've included in, in the document. It was brought to me tonight that one of the things that I don't think is in here, that I'd be happy to add, is ongoing training of town staff on, you know, any number of things, including interaction with customers, things of that nature. So I will add that if the Board would like me to as we work our way through this. I've broken it up into four different sections, the first one being administrative and finance. Again, I can go into this in great detail. I can, it's up to the Board on, I guess, how you want me to, how much detail you want to discuss, or you want to just hit specific goals.
I, I think most of us should have read this by now. What I would suggest is that we just open it up to questions of the Board rather than go through line by line. Is that okay?
Yeah, glad I asked. Thank you.
Okay. So if, if anybody has questions about existing ones or any suggestions for adding, I'll open it up.
I, I'd just like you to read through the whole thing.
I, I'd be happy to. And I can even, I can even try to do it with the enthusiasm of that former board member Vaughn had when she appointed employees, if you'd like me to. But the last thing, the other thing I guess I just want to remind the Board, or make the Board aware of, I guess I should say, is that there are some, if there are some goals that the Board doesn't think have been satisfactorily completed from prior year's goals, I, again, I can go through those and, and modify this to reflect those as well. I tried, I think, to address those, maybe not in the exact language that were there from a year ago, but, but broadly enough in what I'm presenting tonight, that ideally we'll have addressed those, but happy to.
So the other suggestion I would make, we all got this late last week. If there's any Board members who, who would like some more time to look at this, is there any issue with, with voting these at our next meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. So if anybody feels like they need some more time to go through them or add to them, edit them, no?
Where, Keith, would you add that employee training in the Administration and Finance section or the, I wasn't really sure where it belongs, kind of what category?
Probably, I guess I would.
Improve information? I'm not sure.
I would probably add it to the administration.
Yeah, Administration.
I think would probably be the more, the more.
Okay. Yeah, that was the only thing that I, what I was going to bring up, but otherwise, I think you've captured everything from the goals that we submitted in the review. Again, maybe in different words, but I like the way that it's grouped. I think it's easier to consume and read. I guess my question is, can you do all of this in one year?
We'll find out, won't we?
Okay.
You know, I think, so part of the reason for me wanting to try to formalize this a little bit honestly, from my point of view, and we've talked about this ad nauseam through the budget process, is the challenges that this community is going to be facing in the upcoming year. So some of the, a lot of the goals will require me to come back to the Board during the year to get some, to get some, some guidance and decisions. You know, again, at the beginning, I've got revolving funds. Well, there's some revolving funds that I think there have to be some policy decisions made that the Board of Selectmen is going to have to identify. And those decisions that are made will then be incorporated into the budget to follow the, the recommendations and decisions made by, by the Board, because they will impact either appropriations and/or revenues in the fiscal '26 budget next year. So there are some policy things. What I'd like to do is, is come back to the Board, try to schedule this on a quarterly basis with some, when I have things to bring back and try to address a lot of the goal setting or the items that I need Board, the Board to weigh in on and decide, make a policy decision on. I'll have to have to you by, you know, the, sometime in December. So when we start putting budgets together, Departments and I can reflect the decisions of the Board consistently in that, in that proposed budget.
So, so what I would suggest is, any Board members have specific questions about any individual goal or any, want to add any goals that you don't see in this document? I can't see Missy, but Missy, are you okay with what you see?
Yeah, I had, I just wanted to make sure that past goals were included in this document if they hadn't been met in prior years. But it sounds like Keith has included those in some of the language. So I just, I haven't had a chance to compare the two. I wasn't here for the last set of them, so I just wanted to make sure that those were included. But it sounds like he might have reordered them and put them here. I just haven't had a chance to look at both side by side yet.
So some of those kind of ongoing things are things like reviewing and proposing improvements to restructuring Kingston's government. It's a constant thing and it is included in here as you look at making efficiency improvements and whatnot. Things like updating the website, improving the user experience, that's on there in its own way. So they, I, I went, I tried to go through it anyway for anything that was ongoing, and I think you captured them, so.
I mean, maybe it makes sense just to make sure, you know, Missy's comfortable, is just hold it for two weeks and we'll, we'll deal with two weeks from now and she'll have had the opportunity to review and compare. And if there's some changes or additions or language modifications, we can certainly do that.
I, I think that's fine. I would say let's, let's table this for, for the two weeks. That way we can just give it some more thought. If there's anything else we want to, you know, tweak or add, that, that gives us the time to do it. So we'll table it for now. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to the annual reappointments. In the board packet, we received the annual reappointment for the Plumbing and Gas Inspector alternate, George Greenwood. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve George Greenwood as Plumbing and Gas Inspector alternate until June 30, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye. Sorry for the delay.
That's okay. Awesome. Moving on, consideration of financial assistance application. We did get a financial assistance application asking for help. The Town Administrator has reviewed the paperwork and is recommending that we pay the past due Eversource Electric in the amount of $1,629.68 and a month's worth of rent in the amount of $282. Keith, anything you want to add?
Just one, real quick. So the, the Board appointed somebody to review these. That individual was not available because of the timeliness that needed, that seemed to be addressed in. I thought I had an understanding about what the Board's expectations were and what the Fund's expectations were. So I've applied those and what I'm proposing is what's in front of you this evening. That's why the person who was normally presenting these to you didn't do that in this case. She just wasn't available.
For a future, perhaps we should have a formal vote on making Keith have the authority to have that if the person we've appointed isn't available in time. That might be good for the future.
All right, any questions? If not, a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the financial assistance application submitted in the amount of $1,911.68 from the Arthur F. Wadsworth Charity Fund for distribution as stated above.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, meeting minutes from May 7. You all should have received that in the packet. So if someone wants to make a motion.
Can I just ask one question before you do that? In the, well, first question, I guess, is do we have to put announcements in the minutes? We always have, but I was just curious. Do we know?
The actual announcements themselves?
Yeah, they're in the minutes.
I was just wondering, because it's not really, I don't know. We always have.
So I think to meet the letter of the law, you don't. You can just say that, that the Board read a number of announcements for, you know, we were got. You can just say that the Board read a number of announcements for, you know, but
Okay.
If you want them, it's easy enough. I think it's just a copy and paste. If you prefer not to have them, that's up to you.
I have no preference if we're going to keep them. I'm just just going to ask if we could add more detail on native plants on Saturday, May 18, Kingston Collection.
I would make a recommendation, we just pull them out. Just my two cents, because you can see them in the video recording.
Doesn't matter to me.
And oftentimes, frankly, it's, you know, when you're approving minutes, the event is, in many times, many cases, has already occurred.
Correct.
So, amend it to say the Chair read a number of announcements, or made a number of announcements?
Sure. Tricia, did you get that? Okay. All right, so is that, that's your motion?
I didn't have any other edits, so that was my only question.
Anybody want a second?
I didn't actually make a motion. So, I move the Board of Selectmen accept the open session minutes, meeting minutes of May 7, 2024, as amended.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay. So, 4-0-1. And...
Can I ask a question about that? People can vote on the minutes if they're not in the meeting, as long as they watch the recording, though, right?
They can, they can vote on them if they don't even participate, but...
Okay. I was just curious. It's come up before, so I figured it's a good opportunity to ask.
It's a personal view. Yep.
Okay.
All right, Town Administrator report.
A few things. Just, again, we've talked about this a little bit. The Finance Committee's going to meet on Monday evening, the 8th, and I'll try to see if we can't get a Capital Planning Committee meeting before the 15th. Looks like that may be the 10th. The Main Street Water Project has begun. They've done some initial test pits out there last week. The project will start in full force the week after 4th of July. There will be traffic delays. The contractor has also already asked to modify the work schedule. The work schedule has been submitted to Mass DOT, modifying it to be from 7:00 to 4:00 on Monday through Thursday, and 7:00 to, I believe it's 3:00 on Fridays. But I guess I, again, just a friendly reminder that there will be one-way, or there'll be traffic only one way during the day, or traffic, you know, I'm sorry, I can't think of the word. There'll be, the police officers will be, the details will be stopping traffic one way to allow traffic to go, to be relieved one way, and then they'll stop that traffic, and the traffic going the other way will be allowed to travel through that area. I apologize for my horrible vocabulary. The work is going to be on the south side of the road, from 171 Main Street down to 200 Main Street. The construction, as we've talked about already, the wastewater project up at the leaching field is going very, very well. Excited about that. If anybody wants to watch drone video, it's on the front page of the website. You can click on that update, and there's a link there that you can watch. We've already, the project has already removed nine eastern box turtles safely, and they were relocated off-site. The project's been tree, the trees removed and stumps cleared. A temporary road's been established, and six leaching field zones have been installed. The upcoming work after July 4th will include excavating within the easement on the Country Club Way. I think that was discussed tonight. So, some of the residents up in Indian Pond will see heavy equipment along the sides of the road for a short period of time during the 1st of July. We had a resignation in the Water Department. William Duggan has resigned his position in the Water Department. And just to make the Board aware, we talked a little about the schedule of the Board moving forward. There are a couple of conflicts to make you aware of. The first is August 13th, which is National Night Out for the Police Department. If the Board is, wants to attend that, I know members have in the past, you might want to consider rescheduling the 13th meeting. And then you also have a meeting on New Year's Eve.
And Christmas, or Christmas Eve. Pick one.
My suggestion would be, I think you can, if the Board is interested, I think we can just eliminate the New Year's Eve meeting, if there's a need to have that meeting. Sometime between the 17th and the 13th of January, we can find a time that's convenient for everybody and have that meeting. August 13th, again, it's summertime. I don't have anything. I don't know if Trish can think of anything that's crazy, that's on the agenda that we've got to move, but if the Board wants to attend National Night Out, you know, we could move that meeting to either the 6th or the 20th, if the Board was so inclined to do so.
Or if we don't need a meeting.
Or if you don't need a meeting, we can, we can work around that, but I think Tricia's got something to say.
The only thing I have on it is we have to post the state primary warrant for the Clerk's Office, so I have to figure out time.
So, I don't know if we couldn't post that on the 16th of July. I don't know if it's, I mean, I assume it's, it may be ready. I can find that out and let the Board know if we need to have a meeting on, quickly on the 13th of August. You could do that and still attend National Night Out, or...
We could even do a Zoom meeting on another day.
Yep.
We could do it at National Night Out.
Why don't we, here's a suggestion. Why don't we wait until the next meeting to see?
Absolutely.
If things change. And then I would suggest we cancel the meeting if possible, and if there's something that comes up, we can do a quick Zoom meeting.
Still have a meeting on the 30th.
Yeah, we have a meeting on the 30th, so we could...
If it's ready by the 30th.
Yes. So, I can, I can check with, I can check with the town clerk and find out if it can be done prior to. If it can't be done prior to, and we have to have a special Zoom meeting, we can schedule that at the Board's convenience, and...
I mean, all I know is I want to be there in person to see who gets attacked by the dog this year, so we should really consider that.
I've heard you...
I will be volunteering at the event, so I will not be available on the August 13th meeting.
I'm also out of town that week, so.
I'm just going to National Night Out, so.
I was going to get ice cream that night, so.
All right.
All right, that's all, that's all I have. One last thing, I apologize. As most of the Boards are aware, probably a year, year and a half ago, the State came in, did a review of the assessing records, found some items that needed to be addressed, and our assessor, Principal Assessor Maureen Clark, has been working towards addressing those. I put at your places this evening a memo from Maureen, and also a summary of the findings and where she stands with addressing those. I think what you'll find is everything that needed to have been addressed by this date has been, but when we get re-reviewed again in a year or so, I think what the State's going to find is records that are much more complete and accurate than they were at the last review. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to share those with Maureen either now or at a later date, after you've had a chance to review the information.
All right. Any questions for Keith?
Have a safe 4th of July. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of the week.
I was gonna, Keith, do you mind talking for just a second about the post on the website about the possible private transfer station?
Sure.
Because there's been a lot of buzz about that, and I think right now, we're in an information gathering stage.
So, yeah, so, there's been some discussion with town staff and a private developer who's interested in constructing and operating a private, what I guess I would call a private transfer station. That developer came to the Board of Selectmen in May, made a formal presentation, informational meeting with the Board of Selectmen, making the Board aware that he will be pursuing the approvals of the Board of Health and the Planning Board locally, and the Department of Environmental Protection, the Mass DEP, on a state level to construct and operate a transfer station on property that's located off of Marion Drive, near the commuter rail station, where he proposed to extend the rail line and contract with residential trash haulers to bring trucks of, full of residential trash into an enclosed building, where that trash would be dumped on a floor, sorted, and then loaded into rail cars that will be, all inside, that will be then covered, and taken by rail. I believe he said one trip in and one trip out a day during hours that don't conflict with the rail, the rail line, and that, that trash would be taken someplace out of state where he would contract with an out-of-state landfill to accept that. The town would, the town, the Board of Selectmen appointed a committee to work with this individual to come up with terms for a host community agreement that would include a number of things that that committee's got to work through, options to consider, that would include removal of the town's trash at no cost. What I mean by that is, right now, you go to the transfer station, you dump your trash into a large container, and that gets, that gets sent to a facility that accepts that. We pay a per-ton basis. That would be taken in some manner by this private hauler. There's been talk about curbside pickup, residential curbside pickup might be an option. Something else that would be on the table would be a per-ton fee that the town would collect, that they could use as just general fund revenue, or they could assign some or all of that to specific purposes, whether it be, whatever that happens, whatever the Board felt was appropriate, and bring that to town meeting. So, what he indicated, as far as the timeline goes, is, I believe he said it was an 18- to 24-month timeline to go through the various boards and commissions, both at the local and state level, to get all of the different approvals that he needs. The land itself is zoned to allow this particular use at that particular site, so there would not need to be any significant zoning changes that need to be done, whether there was any minor changes. I frankly would want to verify that with our Planning Director. So, it's a commercial developer looking to come into town and operate that. I'm sure there are concerns that, because I think all the staff have the same ones, is there going to be a smell? Is there going to be a problem with rodents? Is there going to be a problem with additional truck traffic and potential damage to roads, and any number of those things? And those are all fair questions, and all questions that that proposal will have to address and answer. And I think he's willing, willing and able to do that. So, he's tried to make this, I believe anyways, a very public process, and will continue to do that. There'll be opportunities for residents and concerned citizens to, you know, raise concerns to him directly or through the Selectmen's office. And we'll be updating the website with more information as it becomes available. At this point, he, you know, I asked, and he was willing to share the video that he presented to the Board of Selectmen, just to give people a feel of what the, what the project would look like, to try to answer some of those questions, and not make as many assumptions. And as information becomes available, we'll certainly, you know, present that to the Board and to the public, so they can have an opportunity to weigh in, in whatever manner they want to.
And at this point, we are listening to what they're proposing. We are putting everything out there for the public to see. We are trying to gather as much information as we can to figure out what we want, if we want this project, and if we do, what we want it to look like.
Yep. I mean, I think that's exactly fair. You know, he'll be presenting to the Board of Health and the Planning Board, I would, I would suggest sometime later on this year preliminarily, and they'll be working their way through the process, the approval, the process to make a decision. It's an interesting concept. It could be a very profitable, it could bring a lot of new revenue to the town of Kingston. That being said, as I've said to him, and I think the Board would share, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't matter what type of revenue it brings in, right? We want to make sure that what's coming into the community fits the character of this community, and we will work with him to try to get to that point, if at all possible. And if ultimately it can't be met, then he won't get his approvals that he needs.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You bet. Happy to do it.
Any Selectmen comments?
Just Happy Independence Day, and have an awesome holiday for everybody.
Fireworks are illegal.
You could say that one.
She just did. Don, you got anything? Missy, anything from you?
Nope, thank you.
And I'll just reiterate, Happy 4th of July. Hope everyone has a safe, nice holiday. Our next meeting is July 16th, and if anybody...
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
All those in favor, Eric, aye?
Tyler, aye.
Kim, aye.
Don, aye.
Missy, aye.
Very good. Happy 4th.